And I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order unless there's an objection. Seeing no objection, this meeting is called to order. Councilman Hennigan, may you lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Please rise if you were able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliver it. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I will now open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes. This public comment section lasts up to thirty minutes. And then we have a second public comment section at the end of the meeting should you, someone want to speak. All right, I'm gonna Gabriella Sarmanto, please introduce yourself when you get to the microphone and let us know. And you'll have three minutes, starting when, is the clock ready? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Gabriella Sarmanto. I'm a junior at Dunwoody High School and I'm here to support the installment of Beach Volleyball Courts in Homecoming Park for three main reasons. So there's been immense public interest. I think it'll be a great way to bring young people back to the parks and because of the sport's amazing inclusivity. So two courts were originally supposed to be constructed at Brook Run Park in the original plans. But due to issues with overcrowding, the courts were never built. And this is ultimately fine because of the relocation to Homecoming Park, I think is a more ideal scenario because of its proximity to all the neighborhoods and the high school around there. So it'll have a lot greater impact on the families and all the students in the area promoting the physical activity for that park. So it's a nice and quiet sport, so it won't disturb the houses and families around that area. So it'll just be overall a great addition to the park in that way. So Beach Volleyball Courts will provide a new and exciting activity. It's never been seen before at Dunwoody. It's really inclusive and versatile in the sense that there's so many different ways that can be played. So you can play two V two sixty-six and the rules can even be switched up to meet the players' needs. And so, and so anybody can really play. I mean, older adults can play, young children can even play, and everybody in between. The sand is really soft, so there's limited risk for injury, which also makes it very inclusive. So another point is, so teenage participation in sports has decreased in the last few years, now dropping down to only fifty-two percent, which is quite a big crisis. We need to bring teenagers and just young adults back to parks and exercising again. But the amazing thing is beach volleyball, it's actually one of the few sports where teens' participation has actually tripled. And that is just an amazing fact. I mean, the NCAA has even named it the fastest-growing emergence sport in history. So I know for a fact that these beach courts will be used. They'll be used by not only young people and teenagers, but just anybody who loves the sport, loves the game, and just wants to have an amazing new activity or opportunity to exercise once more. And so we've received a tremendous amount of support during this past year from all age groups and all people who are just really excited to try out this new activity, this new sport. And it's just really amazing because everyone can participate and have their physical benefits when they play the sport. It's gonna be an amazing, unique addition to this park. It'll be, it'll really make Homecoming Park just an amazing area and it'll bring so many people. So I'm really excited and just thank you so much for listening.
All right, thank you. Kelly, you're next, and then Gabby, you'll be up after. Come on up, you'll have up to three minutes. And just a reminder, when you clap, it takes from the thirty minutes, I have to say that. So if you wanna clap, clap once, I guess, but it's fine if you don't. Thank you, go ahead.
Great, thank you. First, I just wanna thank the council members for being so open and innovative with this project for the beach volleyball courts. It's just such a unique opportunity and helps to diversify the amount of and types of activities in the park. And so it's very forward-thinking, thinking about people of all age groups and participating. And as a parent, having to compete with screen time, I love the idea of something that will bring young people to the park. And you don't have to be someone that knows how to play volleyball to actually participate and have a lot of fun. So that's the great thing, one of the great things about it. I also wanna thank all of you for going to the high school and being part of the U.C. Council, as well as the teachers and neighbors and family that are here to support this effort. We had hundreds of people sign an interest form showing interest in the sand volleyball or beach volleyball courts. And it really shows how the community can come together. And I also wanted to note that we want it to feel that there's lots of different options in the park. So we know that there's people that like to play tennis or pickleball or baseball and soccer. And Dunwoody has done such a great job of having those. For example, I know a couple of parks have pickleball courts, a couple of, Brook Run has an amazing soccer field. I know there's being work done at the high school and, and the baseball fields at Peachtree. And it's just really been such an asset. And I think now having the sand volleyball, I mean, it's just really a wonderful thing that you all are considering tonight. And I just wanna thank you for that. If you, and I also did wanna note that when you do a Google search for different types of activities, I do enjoy pickleball. I'm not an avid player, but I think it's neat. But when you Google it, you can find, I think, forty or so courts available within the area of Dunwoody. And some of them are private, some of them are part of neighborhoods. And I know within at least two public parks that Dunwoody has pickleball courts. But if you do a search on sand volleyball, there is nothing in the area. So it is something that will be a draw to the area and help make our community stand out. Thank you so much.
Gabby Lima, please. You'll approach the microphone and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Gabby Lima and I am a tenth grader at Dunwoody High School. I am here to support the beach volleyball courts for a couple of reasons. Beach volleyball is a growing community and contributes to additional athletic and social aspects to our city of Dunwoody. As mentioned before, beach volleyball is one of the fastest-growing NCAA sports, and I would like to be a part of this number. Currently, I drive three hours as a round trip just to get my hands on a volleyball. With the addition of these courts, this would allow my teammates to practice more often, not just during our practice times, but also outside of volleyball. Also, as far as the social and athletic aspect, it's very common in beach volleyball to run leagues and tournaments on the weekdays and weekends. That would bring and add an aspect to our community, to bring our community together. Thank you for considering these courts.
Thank you, Peyton Townsend. Approach the microwave, the microphone. There you go, the microphone, and you'll have three minutes, thank you.
Good evening, Dunwoody Council members. My name is Peyton Townsend and I am a Dunwoody High School student. I grew up playing in the beautiful parks that Dunwoody has created for young children. And as Dunwoody has grown, the city has expanded its recreational amenities to include the skate park and basketball courts. I would like for you to consider building multiple sand volleyball courts to continue to grow Dunwoody's recreational offerings. Currently, we drive to Alpharetta, Marietta, Roswell, Brookhaven, Tucker, Decatur, Gainesville, Woodstock, and Morningside to practice, pick up, and tournaments. Not only would it be great to host some of these things in Dunwoody, but it'd be great to not have to drive so far all the time and have to already, and already have this built into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Townsend, approach the microphone and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. The name didn't give it away, that was my amazing daughter Peyton. And a lot of her friends are here tonight. And I just wanna take a moment to brag because many of them have earned bids to both the East Coast, the West Coast championships that are happening this year. So the talent pool in Dunwoody and beach volleyball is actually quite condensed and large in a lot of populations within North Atlanta and North Georgia. And it's not something they brag about, which I'm not sure why, because I brag probably for them. But some amazing players here in Dunwoody. So I did also wanna talk to you about beach volleyball also. So I did have a conversation today with A.J. Colser, who let me know that GHSA is now trying to fast-track adding beach volleyball to the Georgia High School Sports Association. And it would be great if Dunwoody could be there and not lag behind in other communities as that program is launched. He sits on the board of USA Volleyball as well as GHSA and has personally committed, if you were willing to, all the funds to support both the courts and additional courts. And can give you a cost analysis of how to, how we could run leagues and tournaments to make sure that it's not only covering maintenance, but also become profitable and is willing to do that with a public-private share. So I know that's not built into your conversation today, but it is something that he is willing to put forth, again, for those courts and for additional courts. If you decide not to go with additional funding, I have been in contact with Kyle Patterson, who is the Parks Manager in Roswell. He walked me through basically the maintenance of the courts and how to do the preventative cleanup, things like that, that I know there's some concerns about how courts are managed. It's actually very easy and minimal. He said that his main problem is geese, which it feels like we got rid of a lot of those with that situation. So things like the composition of the sand, predator scents, and actually even just the smell of sunscreen keeps away quite a few animals. And then, you know, depending on what that looks like, we can talk about lights, we can talk about the noise variances. But I think we can all agree that pickleball makes a lot more noise than volleyball. All that to be said, if you have any questions about the things I've spoken about, please let me know. I'm happy to put you in contact with either of those people. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy, approach the microphone and you'll have three minutes, ma'am. You're so welcome.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, congratulations on winning the Parks and Recreation Prize, whatever you want. I, however, live behind Brook Run Park. I love Brook Run Park, don't get me wrong. Mayor Deutsch, Mr. Henigan, they were on City Council when I first came here in twenty fifteen. It's been ten years. My house is directly affected by the wonderful zipline. You heard of me last couple of weeks ago talking about the noise from the zipline. I have tried to get in contact unsuccessfully with Mr. McLeod, that was one time. Ms. Waldron was also, she was quite helpful. I finally sent certified letters to a few of you, the city manager, city attorney. I have, I'm at the point where I'm just going to ask you to be reasonable about the noise. There's only five houses in Dunwoody that are directly affected by the zipline noise. It's not a large group, but I just want you to have values, like we talked about the invocation. I don't know what else to do. In your night, in tonight's discussion about fiscal budgeting, think about putting up a, I don't care, as a noise barrier of some kind. The trees are cut down every year, that noise barrier is down to nothing. I, I did do what I said I was gonna do, which did a decibel reading. I got ninety decibels until eleven o'clock at night. Now, this is, this is like a football field, right in my backyard. This was nothing, you know, this is something you may be profiting from, from Tree Top Quest, who runs the zipline. I don't know. I could look into that, but I have the feeling if you have a contract with Tree Top Quest, you are getting income from them. And I can only ask you, I'm throwing myself before you at this point because noise is terrible. I can't enjoy my backyard, I have done the studies, I don't know what else to do. I want you to think about that when you're doing your budgeting tonight, just to put up some sort of even barrier. Now, the plants are not doing it. They installed nine plants. That does nothing, and three of them are dead anyway. I've been watering them just to keep them alive. Noise is a stressor, as you can tell, it's been ten years. I just hate the idea that the value of my property would go down because even if this turned into a swimming pool or tennis courts or beach volleyball, the noise is a problem. Please, I don't know what else to do. Grease a few palms, maybe, I don't know. Please, please, please consider just a few homes that are affected by zipline noise and do something about it. Do not allow them to do nighttime. I have nineteen seconds left, I don't know what else to say except, if you were in my shoes, what would you do? Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you. Ali. And you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, City Council. So I know nothing about this beach volleyball, but what I've heard in the last ten minutes, and I'm on board for it for the last ten minutes. I've watched my friend play beach volleyball in Smyrna, and they seem to have like a pretty robust adult league. She plays a couple of nights a week there, they all seem to have tons of tons of fun. My recommend, so from a citizen's standpoint, I'm totally on board for it. But what I would say for council is, if you could look up something called Coconut Beach in the metro New Orleans area. It was actually a very big, popular kind of multiple sand volleyball court, and they did it really well. So they had like somewhere for, I think, like a bar area, which none of the high schoolers will participate in, obviously. But the adults, the adult leagues, would, I enjoy that, and they did it, they just did it really well. Where they brought in a lot of revenue, they were able to host a bunch of tournaments, you know, for, for the high schoolers. They could maybe even become referees or whatnot, you know, and maybe make some extra income. But long story short, they did it well. So I politely asked if you get bored or if you have the computers, just look up Coconut Beach in the metro New Orleans area and see kind of just the pictures and how they did it. That might be one to mirror. What I was gonna speak to you about today quickly was, recently Cobb County got in the news for all the right reasons with their nine-one-one center. Now, I've on several occasions complained about Chatcom nine-one-one and have begged for some type of deviation from them. Obviously Cobb County a lot larger, a lot more area to cover. But they've done some innovation there, which is very interesting. There should be a YouTube video that shows they've used the power of AI. So when people would call in, they would do real-life translations. They've done the little thing with the cell phone, so you can see kind of what's going on, so they can better assess the risk or what the location is. And they're using technology to innovate. Now with Chatcom nine-one-one, I don't know if they're doing that or just kind of cheaping out or whatever it is. But they've, they've obviously have a lot of value from bringing in-house and using that technology. So my ask here would be rather to go back to Chatcom and kind of pressure them into what innovations they're doing to make life easier for our emergency services. Or if possible, take a field trip and maybe kind of see what they're doing in their nine-one-one center, how they're doing it. I think Dunwoody in the future could benefit from it. I think if I'm right, we pay something like a hundred and two thousand or something a month for Chatcom. So obviously a million dollars in the good, potentially. Doing something ourselves, we could probably do it better than them. And then my last comment is I see on the agenda, I think rather the deputy chief or the chief is supposed to talk about a Flock contract. And I would be fully supportive of that, could Flock is also kind of doing those innovative things that I think can better law enforcement and other emergency responses. Before he gets up here to speak about it, I would say that as a citizen, I would be for the Flock contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Rodowski. If you'll just approach the microphone, you'll have three minutes, ma'am. Can you, is it on, is the green light on? And if you'll just speak into the microphone, please.
There it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am here to ask, should we consider having the pickleball courts at Homecoming Park? I was very surprised to see in the paper that that had been changed to a recommendation for beach volleyball. And while that is something that sounds like a lot of fun for certain age groups, certainly not fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years old people who do play pickleball. And a lot of young people play pickleball. It actually is the fastest-growing sport in, in the world right now. We have clinics for even preschoolers and elementary school children. The demographics, the young people are the fastest-growing group now. It's not just the old ladies that are playing pickleball. So to me, pickleball is a little more relevant than beach volleyball at this point. And it seems like beach volleyball maybe be better at the high school. That could be something that they could request Cobb County to add to their new stadium. So that's the only one to say.
Thank you. Leah Marques, you'll approach the microphone and you'll have three minutes, please.
Good, yes. Hi. Thank you guys for letting us speak today and for hearing everything we have to say about it. I appreciate that y'all have this every, every meeting. I'm here to talk in support of the beach volleyball courts, actually. I love the idea of adding them to the high school. I actually think the fellow citizen that just spoke before me, her idea is lovely. I think every single person in front of me knows exactly how that's going to go. I mean, I can tell you how this is going to go if anyone in the audience would like to ask that question. I don't know how fast beach volleyball is growing, but I know that it is. I know that it is an extremely popular sport, especially of young women. I know that sport brings something out of our kids. If any of you have children, you know, when you see your child thrive on the field, on the court, in the pool, whatever their sport of choice is, you see them grow as a person in some of the best ways possible. This sport is great at our high school, our team is actually very good. And I think that this would be a natural extension for those players to maybe have a beach volleyball club or something along those lines. The proximity to the high school actually makes that really, really feasible with everything. What else did I have? Oh, this was one thing I thought about on the way here. One thing I love about this city is we have a little bit of everything. We, we, we just, we've done a really, you, we have done a really good job of kind of making it a place where almost everyone feels very welcome. They, they have a little something for everyone. We don't have beach volleyball courts. The J just built a beautiful pickleball center, not against pickleball in any way, but we have tons of tennis courts around that have the ability to double up if possible. We don't have beach volleyball courts, and I just think it would be a massive asset, particularly for the younger students and kids in the area. But if you go to Brook Run any weekend, you all can see it in that big field where the pavilion, it's called something, but maybe it's called the Big Field. But there's, there's, there's a lot of nets set up every single week. Every time I'm there going to the farmer's market or dropping my kids off at some soccer, I see it. So it's clearly popular and it's clearly has a need in our community, and we haven't yet addressed that need. It was part of the plan for a reason, and I'm asking council and city staff to keep it in the plan and pass the courts for the kids. So that's all, thanks.
Thank you. Eric Stipson. Approach the microphone, sir, and you'll have three minutes.
Greetings, my name is Eric. My wife and I have been here in Dunwoody for about twenty-five years. I wanted to address what Gabby and Gabby talked about and the previous mom here about the popularity of the sport. There was an event last season where Nebraska and University of Omaha played a volleyball match. It was so big, they had to put it in Memorial Stadium. Ninety-two thousand people bought tickets to watch that. It set a record, obviously, for the, for the stadium, but it was a record worldwide. No other women's sport had that popularity in one event. Locally, I don't know if you guys heard, but just a few weeks ago, we had two seven A high schools do the same thing. They set up a volleyball court in the football stadium and sold tickets. It was for charity, but they sold thousands and thousands of tickets. The whole side of the stadium were just full of spectators to watch that one volleyball match between Pope and Walton County. Little closer to home, I've been lucky enough to be a community coach here at the high school systems for about ten years. And about three years ago, one of the coaches and myself and a volunteer mom decided we were gonna go ahead and take every young lady at the middle school Peachtree here who tried out for volleyball. We took everybody, fifty-five girls showed up for tryouts and we took everyone. We didn't cut anybody, we took them all. It produced about four teams, we did that for a few years. It was so successful that we sent many of the girls up to the high school. And it required the high school to now put in a ninth grade team. So now they have the varsity JV and a ninth grade team. The high school probably has about forty, forty-two players. So if you do the numbers, forty-two plus our fifty-five, we're just in the nineties. And then if you add in all the young ladies that through the magnet program are at Shambly, Middle School, High School, and then the other ladies that live here in Dunwoody that are at private schools at Pious and Mount Vernon, we've got over a hundred young ladies who live here in Dunwoody who play volleyball actively. A majority, a large majority, play club. And so to provide this sand court for them is very exciting because now they get to go and play free. They don't have to be with someone like me, a coach, and have to run drills. They can just go and just freestyle, freelance, let their personalities, you know, come out in the, on the court. So I, these young ladies, because I, I probably know probably seventy-five of the girls personally, and they're all quality girls, that some of them are in student government, some of them are in other clubs. Many of them are doing charitable work with their religious groups outside of school. They're just quality girls, many of them are planning to go to college. So the kids that will be at the court will be quality girls.
Thank you. Clint Long. Approach the microphone, sir, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Clint Long and I am the varsity girls volleyball coach at Dunwoody High School. Some of the young ladies who spoke here tonight were my players on our team that just ended. And many of them participate in beach volleyball in addition to playing indoor six V six volleyball. This is my first year as their coach, but I was blown away by the passion and the hard work that the girls put into, into their sports. And it's really kind of brought me back for another season. I was frustrated to hear about some of the statistics about the availability of beach volleyball courts around, around in their area. Just to back up some of those statistics you've already heard here tonight. Not only is the GHSA looking at adding beach volleyball as an additional sport for our girls to play in high school, but there are currently ninety-one NCAA schools that have beach volleyball programs in the area. So, or sorry, in the United States. So those are real like college opportunities, scholarship opportunities that potentially some Dunwoody players could, could take advantage of. In addition to being a volleyball coach and then now advocating for our players, I'm also a huge user of Dunwoody's facilities, park facilities. Brook Run Park is, is that walking trail there has been a great benefit to me, kept me sane during COVID many days. But I also coached the boys' soccer team, we use those multi-use fields out there. And it's been a huge benefit to us, been a huge investment. I hope y'all see the, the benefit of that investment and the Rush Union Club out there. We're trying to do similar things for girl sports and for a different sport here. I play pickleball, enjoy playing pickleball and tennis. I've never had a shortage of places to go play in Dunwoody and the immediate area. However, when it comes to playing beach volleyball, as you can see, we have some folks in our community who are having to travel a long distances to do that. So I hope you all will consider adding beach volleyball at, at Homecoming Park as an investment in our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Where are we with, in the thirty minutes? Okay, Matt, Dan, Dane? Van Dine, sorry.
Good evening, council. My name's Matt Van Dine. I am the freshman team coach at Dunwoody High School. So as you may imagine, I'm here to speak in support of the beach volleyball courts at Homecoming Park. I don't wanna echo a lot of what's been said, a lot of good points have been made. I'll share a personal experience. So I discovered volleyball because a court was put up in my community more years ago than I'd like to admit in front of you all. And it wasn't planned, there was extra money, and it was built near my high school. That's how I discovered volleyball, after playing baseball, soccer, every other sport that I could get my hands on, and I fell in love with beach volleyball. Fast forward those decades, and I'm coaching some of the young players in this room, countless others. And then when it comes to playing beach volleyball, I can't do it in Dunwoody, just like they can't and just like they want to. So where I was fortunate enough to have just luck, put a court in my youth, I'd like to recognize these kids for advocating for themselves to you and pushing for what they wanna have in their community to develop their athleticism, their leadership, and their participation in their community. uh, pushing for what they want to, uh, have in their community to develop their athleticism, their leadership and their participation in their community. So I encourage you to take advantage of their passion and give them that option of being able to play beach volleyball in addition to all the other, uh, opportunities that the parks in Dunwoody already provide. Thank you.
Much. Four minutes. All right, Zach. Zach Humphries, sorry. You'll have three minutes. No, she. Go ahead.
You. On Monday, October twentieth, I learned that Turning Point USA planned to host a rally at Dunwoody Summit Coffee on Saturday, October twenty-fifth. Their advertisement plastered Summit's name and likeness everywhere. I was confused. I go to Summit Coffee every week to tutor calculus too. Summit is not a far-right hangout. It's where Dunwoody's people gather, young workers, women, queer people, youth, families and people of every background. I doubted Summit Coffee had approved this rally, let alone the use of their name and likeness, but apparently the event had been planned for weeks. After tutoring on Thursday, October twenty-third, I asked Summit staff whether Turning Point had their permission. They didn't. No one had even informed them. Turning Point planned to illegally stage a rally at a local business full of Dunwoody's people, putting both customers and workers at risk. Dunwoody's, uh, Summit Coffee immediately sent cease and desist letters and with workers refusing to come in, decided to close that Saturday. They were right to. Turning Point rallies have a well-documented history of provocation and violence. With, with Summit's blessing, I organized a small peaceful gathering that day to sal-, to celebrate a beloved community space and Dunwoody and its residents showed up. Turning Point left humiliated. But this could have been much worse. Turning Point had no intention of dialogue, for they could have had a dialogue with Summit and its owners of the parking lot if they wanted to. They came to provoke and intimidate Dunwoody's youth, families and marginalized people, just as they had tried the previous week at Florida A&amp;M, a historically black university, without permission. Imagine if I hadn't told Summit. If its owner had forced employees to work that day, a confrontation could have escalated into violence. Someone could have brought a gun. People, including police, could have been seriously hurt or killed. We talk endlessly about preventing political violence. Well, this is how you do it. Many of you on council have plans for a grand Dunwoody, but when you cannot guarantee basic things such as public safety, it reinforces the narrative that the government is ineffectual and not to be trusted. Why support a candidate's larger policy goals when they continually make decisions that put us at personal and financial risk? Especially when Dunwoody's community and I just showed we can do a better job protecting these groups than you are willing to. It is nonpartisan to inform and enforce laws that protect the wider public safety. Political violence will become more common in Dunwoody, especially now that Turning Point knows our leaders are apparently fine giving space for it. Learn from this, please, because if you don't, we, the people, will. Thank you.
All right, that is all the cards I have. Um, I think we have like a minute left, but we will have another public comment section at the end of the meeting. Should anyone have public comment they would like to give? Next is Ms. Betcher.
Good evening, uh, mayor and council, and I'm going to ask the graduates here today with Dunwoody one oh one, would y'all come up and just fill in these front rows? Um, it is my pleasure tonight to introduce you to a few of the graduates of the second class of Dunwoody one oh one all aboard. Y'all remember that this was a program we revived back in the spring, uh, sort of a reimagining of the citizens academy from, um, many years ago. We added, um, some twists, made it a day-long experience, sort of an immersive experience. We had informational sessions and a trolley ride of, uh, parks and new developments. In your packet, there's a link to a survey of, of the participants, talking about some of the highlights of the program, what they learned. And, um, so I hope you'll take a look at that. I've also asked three participants to come up and say a few words to you. So I want to introduce Carrie Arias, Diane Douglas and Renee Rivers. And we'll start with Carrie.
Hello, I'm Carrie Arias and I am so thrilled to have participated in Dunwoody one oh one. My husband and I have lived in Dunwoody for twenty-eight years and I honestly had no idea of so much of what our government does, what Dunwoody offers. And in my profession as a Realtor, it's vital, even though I sell in Georgia, it's vital that I know the city that I live in and learned that, you know, we have a historic cemetery next to campus two four four. I learned that Dunwoody homeowners can have up to six chickens, but no rooster and as long as they're um, cages twenty feet from the perimeter of their property. So I just, I learned so much and am so pleased to be a part of the city of Dunwoody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Diane Douglas and thank you, Jennifer and the city of Dunwoody for the opportunity to participate in the recent Dunwoody one oh one event. It was an awesome experience. I learned a lot about the city, including its history, its structure, the different, um, the recent developments and upcoming initiatives. I also had the opportunity to meet and had several wonderful conversations with my fellow Dunwoody neighbors. It was excellent. I also, highlights for me for the day were the tours of the Real Time Crime Center and the Crime Scene Lab. I also enjoyed the finance presentation by Jay and learned a lot about the different funding sources and budget. Overall, it was an amazing experience. Thank you again.
Good evening. My name is Renee Rivers. I've lived in Dunwoody since two thousand and eight and, um, this opportunity was mind-blowing. There was so much that I did not know. Immediately getting into my car at the end of the day, I texted my husband and said, "The best day ever." I couldn't even wait to get home to share of my day. Um, just learning so much about the city of Dunwoody, but I think the best part about it was that it was wrapped in so much fun. It was so much fun to be with, um, just fellow Dunwoody residents, as was already shared, and just the learning of the various things that were just filled into one day. There was so much to take in in one day, but it wasn't too much to take in one, in one day. And I just want to thank you all again for, um, just this wonderful opportunity as a Dunwoody resident.
Thank you.
We are going to, um, bring them up for our picture and would love for y'all to come down. We do want to mention, we have, uh, we will do this twice a year is our plan as of now. Uh, we actually had twenty-five people on the waiting list, uh, so we will, uh, give them first priority to sign up for the next one. Um, and we'll pick a date hopefully in the very, um, next few months, if not at the very beginning of the new year. Thank you all.
All right, um, first I want to thank Jennifer for pulling, uh, putting, designing and implementing this great program. I know that people always come energized and they learn so much about the city and I think it's fantastic. So thank you. And next is consent agenda. Nope, next is public hearing. I turned the page over too fast. Richard, oh, Jennifer, Sharon has to read it.
A resolution adopting a budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six for each fund of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia. Pursuant to Article Five, Section Five of the Charter of the City, beginning January one, twenty twenty-six and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, appropriating the amounts shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the item of anticipated funding sources, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations and prohibiting expenditures from exceeding actual funding sources.
Good evening, mayor and council. So this will be the, uh, uh, final public hearing on the twenty twenty-six budget. And we've seen this presentation a couple of times, so I'll go through it, uh, with some pace, but we did add some new slides to it as well. So I will cover those, uh, a little bit more in-depth. Just to let you know, budget, again, budget was put on the website by the end of August, August twenty-seventh to be exact. It's two full months for review. Um, if it is not approved tonight, then this is the budget as proposed that'll go into effect, uh, uh, January first. Um, we've heard a couple of different workshops. We held a workshop on September twenty-ninth, SEIP review on October sixth, and then again, public hearing on October fourteenth, and then this is the second and final public hearing. To give a, uh, very high-level overview of the twenty twenty-six budget, so oftentimes you talk about buckets, in this case, like more squares and rectangles, but this is the seventy-point-five million dollar twenty twenty-six budget broken out kind of really by funding source, or if you want to use the word bucket, by bucket. So the general fund, the main operating fund of the city is thirty-eight million dollars. That's roughly fifty-four percent of the budget. Um, we've got our next largest funds are really, uh, capital dedicated, SPOLOST one and two, so they can really only be used for specific purposes based on the referendum that was approved. That's fourteen-point-four million dollars. The majority of that, approximately eighty-five percent goes toward transportation with public safety, repairs and maintenance in there as well. Um, Hotel Motel is for the development of tourism. That's five-point-nine percent of the budget. And then the general capital project fund is more, uh, loose than the SPOLOST funds, but still funded through general, uh, uh, dollars basically. So, and then you get into much smaller funds, Stormwater is three million dollars and then, uh, lower funds than that. So, uh, again, the general fund itself is the main operating fund of the city and that makes up a little bit more than half of the budget, fifty-four percent or thirty-eight million dollars of the seventy-point-five million dollar budget. Couple of quick highlights on this budget. So the twenty twenty-six budget does not use, uh, fund balance within the general fund, similar to the twenty twenty-five budget. And what we've really seen is, uh, uh, and, um, higher digest growth as well as, uh, 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 control of expenses and the post-COVID economy that's really helped us get to this point that we're at, basically. So, on a very high level. So the rest of this page's presentation will focus, or the next couple of slides, I should say, will focus on the general fund operating budget as it is proposed. We also have the, uh, budget amendment and the last couple of slides will focus on that budget amendment as well that is before us tonight. So, um, for the general fund itself, and again, this is as it's proposed, uh, twenty twenty-four was a good year. We added three and a half million dollars to fund balanced, finished the year with a little bit over eleven months of unassigned fund balance in the, uh, policy that we, that the city's adopted, so that we have to keep a minimum of four months, uh, reserve. Um, I know it's a stated goal of council to go at least six months. So we are about thirteen-point-eight million dollars above the six-month reserve at the end of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the amended twenty twenty-five budget is in balance, thirty-seven million dollars in revenue, thirty-seven million dollars in expenses. We'll end the year with about ten million doll- I'm sorry, ten months of, uh, unassigned fund balance or about eleven-point-eight million dollars. And similar to twenty twenty-six budget, it's in balance as well, thirty-eight million dollars in revenue, thirty-eight million dollars in expense, nine-point-six, uh, months of unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. That's forecasted about eleven-point-two million dollars above that six-month reserve. Next, we'll focus, uh, we've got two slide, or a couple of slides, I should say, on revenue. We approached revenue slightly different this year while still conservative. We did take twenty twenty-four actuals and basically forecast those out for two years, um, to get that twenty twenty-six proposed budget. We're very comfortable with the twenty twenty-six budget. Uh, again, still conservative. Couple of things to highlight here, property taxes, that very top line, that's the three and a half percent. That's really the change in the digest that we're forecasting for twenty twenty-six. We've seen that trend down a little bit. It's been as high as seven, seven and a half percent. This past year is about five-point-four percent. So we're cut, we're trending it down to three and a half percent, but a-again, something, uh, we feel comfortable with. Franchise fees are going up. That's the Georgia Power franchise fees that we get once a year. Uh, a couple of our highlights there, Hotel Motel tax down toward the bottom, working with Discover Dunwoody, uh, at three percent. That's what Ray is forecasting right now. So, uh, we're being consistent with that as well. So again, overall revenue growth from the twenty twenty-five amended budget to the twenty twenty-six budget is about eight-point-six percent. We wanted to show one other way is to show it in a pie chart to show that, uh, real property tax, the largest piece, slice of the pie there is, we've said it's always about a third of the budget. It's thirty-one percent in this case. There's a couple of other large sources. Insurance premium tax is about fifteen percent and then the electric franchise fee is about ten percent. And then everything else, uh, business license is about ten percent also. Um, and then smaller revenue sources after that. But again, just to highlight, it's about a third of our budget is the property tax revenue that the city receives. And speaking of property tax, one last slide on this. This shows both a bar, bar graph and, uh, true numbers as to the aggregate, um, military that is, uh, effective within the city. Um, as you'll notice, there's five cities that have a freeze. Dorville, Tucker, Unincorporated, Cabbrook Haven and us, Dunwoody. And you also notice on the right-hand side at the bottom, Dunwoody does have the lowest aggregate tax rate within the county. So, um, uh, just again, to point out something to let everybody know that we do, that's where Dunwoody resides right now in terms of total tax rate. Real quickly focusing on operating expenses. So this is again, the general fund, the main operating fund of the, um, of the city. Police is the largest fund at a fourteen and a half million dollars. Often say it takes roughly forty percent of the budget. Uh, thirty-eight percent is what it is this year, very consistent with the twenty twenty-five budget as well. Um, if you take the little four largest departments, so police, public works, parks and IT, that's, uh, sixty-eight-point-nine percent of the budget. Debt services, three-point-six and capital one-time expenditures are point and a half, or one and a half percent. So the remaining departments are about twenty-six percent of the budget. Looking at it by expense category, so instead of by department, this is where, that's departments, how we spend it. This is the categories that we spend it in. Uh, personnel costs, so that's city employees, fifty-five percent of the budget with the, uh, orange slice toward the bottom there. Official admin services, that's our contract labor. That's seven percent. So when you add those two together, roughly sixty-two percent of our budget are people-related costs. Property and liability insurance is two percent and debt service is four percent. So those are six percent. So when you factor in everything else, all of the other categories are about thirty-one percent of the budget or roughly eleven-point-six million dollars. We have two more slides just to notate headcount. So this is the proposed twenty twenty-six budget, uh, how the twenty twenty-six's budget from a city, uh, positions perspective. So there are a hundred and thirty-nine and a half, uh, city positions that are included within this budget. Uh, the majority of them are within the police department, eighty-seven. Um, and then you can see the breakdown for all the other departments as well. The next slide is going to add in the contract positions and the big difference here is in that right-of-way maintenance where we add those thirty contract positions. We have a total of fifty-four contract positions. So when you add the two together, city positions and contract positions, it's, um, a hundred and ninety-three-point-five total positions that is how this budget was built. One last thing, just talking specifically about, uh, twenty twenty-six capital. So this is just for fiscal year twenty twenty-six included in the budget document. That's on the website is a five-year CIP. That's twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-nine, uh, twenty twenty, uh, twenty thirty, I'm sorry. But this just focuses on the twenty-point-six million dollar total twenty twenty-six capital budget. Really, if you look at the slices, the largest department is public works. So they have funding and SPOLOST one and two, as well as Hotel Motel, and then a small portion of general capital. So sixty-five percent of the budget goes toward the capital budget as public works related, transportation improvements, things of that nature. Parks is, uh, next largest at twenty-two percent. They have funding within the within the general capital fund and SPOLOST two. And then public safety is eleven percent of the budget. And then finally, smaller repairs and maintenance and IT are roughly two or three percent of the budget. So the majority of the budget, as indicated here, is SPOLOST related, one and two, going toward transportation related projects. So that's the as is portion of the budget. So this is the proposed budget amendment. The left hand side shows if the budget amendment is adopted, where we would finish. So as we mentioned before, twenty twenty six in months ending fund balance would be nine point six or eleven point two million dollars. This budget amendment proposes to use seven point two, three, five million dollars of it. That would leave new ending fund balance at about twenty two point seven million dollars, which would be seven point two eight, still above, well above the four month policy reserve and even about one point three months above the six month reserve goal, or approximately four million dollars above that target. Four areas of recommendation, police equipment for seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, homecoming park for five million dollars, pedestrian safety for five hundred thousand, and sidewalks for a million. And each slide will kind of, well, the next slide will dictate or lay out what is included within those totals. So for PD or police related, it would be the drone for two hundred thousand dollars, some of the electric vehicles, Ford Maverick, about a hundred seventeen thousand, additional fleet vehicles for replacement fleet vehicles, I should say, for a hundred and eighty three thousand, and then ballistic windows for vehicles, police related vehicles, about two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. So that's seven hundred and thirty five thousand. The five million dollars for homecoming car park, among other things, Wildflower Meadow, open playfield, half a mile nature trail, restroom pavilion with solar panels, twelve thousand square foot inclusive playground, sand volleyball courts, a sensory garden, and community space building with solar panels. That would be included within the five million dollar allotment for homecoming. Pedestrian safety includes five projects, Vanderland at Hensley, crosswalk bowl bout, Stonewody Village Parkway Intersection Safety, Womack and Vermac Bowl Bout, Tilly Mill at Dunwoody Glen, crosswalk, a realignment, and audible pedestrian push buttons at ten intersections. And finally sidewalks, there'd be three of those projects, Hamley Dunwoody Sidewalk, a Peel Road Sidewalk, and a Vermac Sidewalk. So that is the total of the amendment, and I believe that is it for the presentation.
Thank you. Questions or comments? There's no hearing on a second read, right? Oh, there is a hearing. Let's papers here, sorry. All right. That's my, I apologize. Just messed up. All right. So I will open the public hearing unless there's an objection. Seeing no public hearing. I will look for anyone who would like to speak in favor of this budget. There'll be ten minutes. Anyone want to speak in favor? If anyone would like to speak in opposition, you can approach the microphone. You have ten minutes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I appreciate your, this opportunity to talk tonight on the budget. My name is Bob Hickey. I'm a Dunwoody resident for fifty plus years. I'm here tonight in general for the budget, with the minor exception of a couple of suggested changes. My two specific budget changes, suggested changes are are as follows. Number one, add resources to the police department budget to get them up to the staffing level that was recommended by the Barry Dunn report, and to get them up to the level that we could have community, neighborhood policing, police cars to occasionally go by a neighborhood. Okay. And also for traffic safety, traffic enforcement. As one of our council members stated at the forum the other night, deterrence is a primary tool to improve both real and perceived public safety. And I think to get to the police department staffing levels that was recommended by the Barry Dunn report is a desirable objective. I commend the police department on implementing a wide variety of the things in the Barry Dunn report, but these are the three things that are have not been implemented in the Barry Dunn report. And I think this needs to be done over a probably a three year plan. Okay. You can't get there in a one year, but to start with, say, seven hundred and fifty thousand to let the police department begin to develop the resources next year to get to the level that would make us citizens feel safer. The hell with the stats, okay? I don't feel safe, okay? The stats may be going down in Dunwoody on on crime, but I don't feel safer. I can tell you that. Number two, contrary to many other people tonight, and I'm not against beach volleyball, okay? I've lived in Dunwoody for fifty plus years. My kids went to Dunwoody High School. I've had grandkids go to Dunwoody High School. They've all played sports activities. I'm not against beach volleyball. I'm against the process that puts beach volleyball into the budget, okay, for next year without any sufficient vetting. Okay, there was a wide, wide participation two years ago when the city came up with the capital improvement project list for the stuff that was in the bonds and others that the city has proceeded on. Okay, beach volleyball was not in that list. So I object to the beach volleyball being included in the budget proposal tonight. Again, I appreciate your time. I thank you very much for your service to our great city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I need to close the public hearing unless there's an objection. The public hearing is closed. And now I will take questions or comments. Go ahead, Rob.
So I'm actually going to echo the last comment, which is just a procedural issue that we have not in fact amended the the master plan for the parks. So we've been talking about making the change since April, but that is a procedural step that I think we ought to do. I don't know that it affects the budget decision on the amendment because the two items are essentially the same cost, but we will need to visit what we will do with that space, whether we'll keep the pickleball as the original plan or amended as, you know, a lot of the folks tonight have asked.
Okay, Catherine.
In speaking with Chief Carlson, I believe, I want to add their, add to their budget to forty two thousand plus dollars for the the vest plates to prevent rifle shots. They are light lighter weight than the ones that we do have. So I'll be adding that.
So procedurally, we'll be amending the amendment. There'll be a vote.
Because we haven't even had, there's not, there's not an amendment on the.
Yeah.
Right.
So this would raise the police, the projected police capital to eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Tom, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to just make a few general comments, some comments that were made during the the public hearing portion. Just for the record, in the last few years, the city of Dunwoody has added nine positions to our police department. So our staffing levels have never been higher in the city's history. So we have added nine police levels. I do agree that we need more. And I have this conversation with the chief regularly, and he has a plan. And when he comes and asks us for more police officers, I will, I will support that, and I I trust that my fellow colleagues will as well. So but but we've never compromised on public safety, and I don't think we ever will. And just just a clarification, too, on the beach volleyball. The beach volleyball actually was, when we did the the capital projects, I know I led the committee, it was a part of the Brook Run improvements. We decided to move that out of Brook Run and relocate it to Homecoming Park. As Rob pointed out, we probably still need to go through an official amendment to the to the master plan for that park. There were two reasons for that. The first is because we have plans for a spectacular inclusive playground at Homecoming Park. It was determined that pickleball, it, I'm a pickleball player. No, that's not how I got in crushes. That was actually tennis. But but pickleball is a rather noisy sport. And we did not feel that that was congruent with having an inclusive playground, because sometimes that noise can be triggering for some, some, some people. So we we decided that pickleball really wasn't the best option there. And then we realized that Brook Run was kind of built out, and we really didn't want to add any more amenities there. It seemed like a natural shift to put the beach volleyball over at Homecoming. And as we heard from so many students today, I think the proximity to the high school makes that a good decision, and it certainly sounds like there's a need. So I just wanted to clarify those those comments and some of the rationale behind the decisions.
I guess we actually did discuss revising the homecoming plan on in the April twenty eighth meeting of this year in twenty twenty five. We have not officially done it yet. But I know that I fully support the substitution of beach volleyball for pickleball. And I also like to point out, you know, all the young ladies were here, but it is certainly both boys and girls play. In fact, the I was had a meeting with the manager of Perimeter Mall, and he is a huge beach volleyball player and would very much support having the courts here in Dunwoody as well. So it's not something that we just decided this week. It is something we have been talking about, and I think moving forward, we we will make it official. But I know I will be supporting to be putting beach volleyball courts in Homecoming Park.
John.
I'll just echo what everybody else has already raised. Back in April, we had a meeting very in depth, lots of several pages, lots of reasons, the the financial pros and cons, the upkeep, the maintenance. We all got a great discussion about what's appropriate for that park. Yes, it was a discussion item, but there was no, I mean, somebody please speak up if if I misspeak, but we were pretty much in lockstep. That's what we were going to do. We were going to change from pickleball to volleyball. As far as I was concerned, it was a done deal. I guess looking back at the records, we never did change the master plan. That being said, tonight's budget should move forward as it's stated at some point. If you want to throw a master plan change to finalize and update it for the website and for transparency reasons, let's do that. But as far as I'm concerned, that we move forward with the budget as presented tonight. Catherine, you mentioned the vests. First time I'm hearing about the vests, I think, I'm not sure I've heard of that previously. If Chief Carlson says it's needed and says it's an upgrade that's worth our while, then again, that makes sense to me. I just haven't heard that yet. I did hear about the ballistic glass. I'm all in for that. As far as the very done aspect, we have always given chief pretty much what we what he needs as far as personnel, as a discussion with the city manager, what's appropriate for the budget. But that being said, if there is a report, I know it looks like deputy chief is here, but if the chief at some point in the future wants to come back and give us a very done update about where we were and his long term plans, that's appropriate. I did hear that the, you know, the property crimes are down, and as much credit as I want to give to everybody for property crimes, I'm also not a hundred percent sure anybody should take credit for something that may have gone out of business. So, you know, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm not. I don't know. It's hard to say. But, you know, I'm proud of this budget. We're going to move forward with it. I'm not proud of everything in this budget, and there's a couple of things that I'm not a hundred percent sure that I want to vote yes for. But that being said, there's a lot that's in there that's that's good. There's the, we're working within the charter guidelines. We have the lowest tax rate across the entire county. We are moving forward with infrastructure improvements. We're using capital funds for Homecoming Park. We're investing in the police department, improving pedestrian safety while still installing sidewalks. I'm proud that we're able to include a, correct me, Richard, a three point nine percent pay raise for all employees come July first. So that's in the books, three point nine percent. That's already budgeted. We're not going to have an additional budget request asking for that. So that is a done deal. I'm very happy that we don't have to come back for that three point nine percent pay raise for employees. I'm glad that we have reserve funds now. We know exactly what we're spending. We're spending the seven million plus a little, but that gives us enough background funds for a rainy day in case something were to happen. For example, I want to make sure that we have our EMS funds available. We have a contract that's expiring December thirty first, and that if that EMS service is not up to par, I want to make sure we revisit that and have money available to reinstate that contract. That's important to me, and we have the funds available. There's also funds available in case something were to come available. What if this, the post office, the Dunwoody Post Office, which is almost closed, as far as I'm concerned, it's it's not being used appropriately. If that building were to be offered by the federal government to the city of Dunwoody at a fair price, and the citizens of Dunwoody thought it was a good deal to get that property and do something with it, in the sense of a a public space, a parking lot, I'm not sure, there's a thousand things it could be used for. But if that, if that building were to come available, we still have funds in the bank ready to roll on that. I think that's important. Again, as I've said before, I'm not a fan of twelve foot sidewalks on Peeler, spending three million dollars, two million dollars in this budget for a sidewalk that only goes four tenths of a of a of a mile, to me, is a little bit high. I'm not in favor of that. I'm not in favor of the three point seven million that we're spending on the Brook Run Maintenance Facility. That facility, it's not just a maintenance facility now. It's now an office space for city, it's a, it's a city hall for the Parks Department, and I think we went over budget on that. I think we initially allocated one point five million, and now it's at three point seven. I wish that wasn't in our budget. That being said, I'm still very proud of everything in our budget, everything else in our budget. I'm proud of what we do. I'm very thankful for our finance department and all the work that they do, as long as our city manager, assistant city manager, making sure that our funds are coming in on time, that we're spending appropriately, and all the office directors, I do thank you. So that being said, I'm not sure I'm voting for this budget. If I were to offer a, a, an amendment or a motion to remove two million dollars from Peeler, I know it wouldn't go anywhere. It wouldn't get a second. I mean, that being said, I I think we're overspending on that location due to the fact that the other Winter Chapel is not happening anytime soon because it's federal funds. And I think we're stepping in front of Peeler for a, where a place where only a sidewalk is needed, not a twelve foot path, not lighting, not clearing out that area. But that's, that decision's already been done and decided by council, and I'm just one vote. But if anybody else would like me to, I'm happy to make a motion to amend the budget to remove that two million dollars. But I'd love to hear somebody else mention that. Thank you.
Hi, Joe.
So this is my sixth year on city council, and when I was an at large advocate, I've been other city council meetings when they have budget hearings and proposals. And our neighbor, when they get to this point in time, it's just an up or down vote. There's not even in a presentation, and council just voted on it. So let's kind of rewind where we've been and kind of let the public know the touch points that the city council has had, has been had the opportunity to have with our amongst ourselves, with staff. The public has had opportunity to have engagement and where we are in the process today. Started off sometime in, I want to say probably late July or something, early August, I was afforded and other council members, we went and sat down with the the staff once the budget was proposed. So I spent probably about three hours in city and went through all of my questions. Then we had two separate, what we call work sessions. So tonight, we're in a city council meeting. It's an action item, but we were, we had, and these are public hearing, public meetings. So we had a several hour long work session where we went through the whole budget as a whole. So each one of us up here had an opportunity to speak our thoughts and feelings and ideas, and and those were heard. Then we had a separate section just on the capital budget as well, second session. So we've, we've heard those, those individuals have had time to speak on those. Then it was the fourteenth of October. That was the first public hearing, and now we're in the twenty seventh. So for those of you that like to hear commentary, you can go back to the meetings on those as well and hear what we had to say. But I believe it's a, we have a six people steering and one person at the at the helm of this ship, six, six elected officials and the mayor, and we kind of all kind of steer towards the right direction. And yeah, there's a couple things that I may not approve on this that I didn't like or was a surprise. But as a whole, I believe we're in the right direction, and I'm I'm ready to support this. Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you. Students in the room, this is a lesson on compromise. Not thrilled with the cost overruns on the facility at Brook Run. In fact, I think I voted against it when it came in front of us. It is, as I understand it, it's mostly, the office space is primarily for the work crews. Is that right, Eric? Parks is not headquartered there, correct? I just want to make sure that I understand. It's for the the people that are in the field.
That's right.
And the parks and doing our right of way, correct? And the parks and doing our right away, correct? Right. But I voted against it. I wasn't thrilled with the cost over. It's not really a cost overrun as much as it is, as the project got more complex and things have just, if you're shopping for anything, things have just gotten more expensive. And potentially we didn't estimate right to begin with. I want to talk about public safety because it's really my if I had to say, it's really my top, my only priority really. And chief knows that when he fills his, all the positions that are available, and we have a few vacancy that he is to keep going. We will find the funds to continue to fund expansion of our police department. And no one more than me believes that we need several dozen more officers. It's just, it's tough. It's a tough hiring environment and and we do not cut corners and we do not lower, we will not lower standards. There's a lot of documentation out there about what makes a good police officer. And we are not going to waver from that simply to have people come work for us. And for that, I'm very, very proud and really committed to upholding a high standard. And we have a fantastic police department. And since there's some new people in the room, I'd like to show something. Can we pull up my chart that I showed a few weeks ago? Because I think one of the things that sometimes gets lost in the way we talk about finances in Dunwoody. So you heard during the presentation that we have the lowest mileage rate in DeKalb County. We likely have the lowest mileage rate of any city that has a police department. I have not done a deep analysis, but I want to show you when you compare properties. And to be clear, just in case people really understand how things work with property taxes, the three properties in DeKalb County, Dunwoody, unincorporated DeKalb and Shambly have the same day frozen assessed value. So they were frozen at about the same time, or at least at about the value. I did a lot of work to find these properties. And and then you can see the mileage rate. So you can see that in Dunwoody, a home that that for a house that's paying, that's assessed its value currently at 633,000. You see the values of the others and then you see the significant difference. And then if you just go look at our neighbor in Sandy Springs, and I combined it with county taxes because every city provides slightly different services in every county. But when you combine the city and the county, you're getting all this, you're getting all the services. So for example, in Dunwoody, we currently don't provide fire. DeKalb County does, but in Sandy Springs, they provide their own fire. So I wanted though to show you how relatively how much less we are paying on houses that are similarly valued in your city property taxes. And I'm very, so I'm incredibly proud of the quality of services that we deliver on the budget that we operate on. And if you want me to, I can show you the difference per capita of what we spend per resident versus our neighbors. And so I'm just very proud. So when I have the opportunity to brag, I do, a budget is ultimately a compromise. Everyone's not going to get what they want. And I think when I talk to some of you at U City Council and at other organizations, I talk about how we have to come up with a plan under under our rules. If we get to October 31st and we haven't adopted a budget, whatever I put together becomes the budget. This is a better process. I'm sure my colleagues up here would agree. And so you know, we're fortunate that we can do what we do, how we do it on on what we do it, especially compared to some of our neighbors. All right. Go ahead. Yeah.
Just to circle back, I don't really have anything to add on public safety. I think you and Tom and John all all said a lot. Apparently we're re legislating the park building though. So I just wanted to share a little bit of history since we have a contract and we're trying to build it out. So in in early 2023, we got what I'll refer to as a back of the envelope estimate to replace a an old park building. It was created by the previous parks director. It wasn't based on any estimate from a construction company or anything like that. November of 2024, we actually got legitimate estimates. And that's where the 3.7 million comes out. We all, I think justifiably freaked out a little bit at that cost. And revisions were made and it came back at about 3.3 million, 3.2, about 500,000 less, which includes contingency. So yes, it's over, but yes, we already decided this. And one of the reasons I think that we decided it was that the other building caught on fire in 2022. It it doesn't meet our purposes. It's not safe. And if you want to have good staff, you have to respect that they need a place that's safe to work. And so I actually, it it came in higher than we want, but you know, we ended up adjusting it to be lower. You know, I think if we had had an actual bid to begin with, would maybe maybe have pushed it off for a year, maybe. But it it's going to need to be replaced. I think inclusion in the budget to meet our contractual needs is absolutely required. And in general, I I like the budget. Is it perfect? No, but I mean, as Lynn mentioned, everything's a compromise and I think it's it's a pretty good budget. So thank you.
One more point. We have pickleball courts planned for the Wildcat Park. I was going to remember the name and and we have asked staff to go ahead and look if there's a different way to construct that park other than all at once. So we are not ignoring the demand for pickleball. And also, oh, yes, and I wanted to clarify this. So tonight we pass a budget. Then it's up to our staff to bring forth presentations. We will have a meeting to amend the plan if needed, but first we have to see what we can really afford. And so there there's a process by which this happens. And we will follow that procedure. And with that, I think this is, I know this is a a business item, so we need a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
And then
Madam Mayor, I'd like to propose an amendment to the budget to reallocate from the general fund, 7.3 million dollars. The reserve, no, I'm sorry, reserves, the reserve general, yes, the reserve fund. And to be allocated $5 million towards Homecoming Park, $1 million towards sidewalks, $800,000 towards police equipment, $500,000 towards pedestrian safety, and to reallocate the $1 million presented in the original budget for Homecoming Park to a project unallocated, which will be available for appropriation upon subsequent action of city council.
Okay. It's an amendment.
Second.
Okay, so there is any questions or discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I call the question on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we have an amended motion. Any discussion on the amended motion?
I would just like for in regards to Homecoming Park. Before we put it out to bid, I do think we need to make the change, the official change to the master plan so that when it goes out to bid and we are getting quotes, it is to include the beach volleyball.
Okay, so I'm sure Eric heard that. Okay, all in favor of the
One quick question. Did Don mentioned the the ballistic vest. We want to get a quick update on what that is. Just so that you're comfortable. I just want to make sure whether it was in there or not in there. That was going to be my question as well.
It's in there. It was
The this vest, I I had asked for Chief Carlson's input as to anything else that he wanted added in the 7 million plus funds that we were going to allocate. He came back to me with that number two day.
And so it is in there. We just round, it was going to be like 772,000, I meant with the 48 and we just rounded to eight.
So we've now added the money in for the ballistic vests and that's into the motion that was just amendment that was just approved. And I guess Eric and deputy chief are they're both in agreement. That's appropriate. So I'm I'm taking for granted. That's the, so thank you. I think I'm ready to vote.
Okay, all in favor of the amended budget, amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
That was the big, that was the main budget.
That was the main budget, yes.
That's the main budget. That we've already voted on the amendment.
Right, so that passes six to one. Thank you all for your work on this document. Now we have the consent.
May I make a motion, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To amend the mo, amend the agenda to item number nine, discussion contract award to Whitestone Spray LLC to remove that from the agenda.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Joe, why? If I could ask.
Eric.
We spoke, Eric, go ahead, Eric.
Second, it's a little review.
Sure.
The staff would like to have more time to study this, this this topic. We don't need it right now until the spring. This is for the spring. It's a multi-year contract. After speaking with my purchasing director earlier today, I want, there were some possibilities, some other sources for this type of material. So we want to take a look at the different sources we have and also the environmental impacts of the spray that goes on top of the pine straw. We want to take a look at those things. So we'd like, we don't need you to defer it, just just take it or remove it and we'll bring it up another time, maybe before the end of the year, but I would like to have a few weeks to regroup.
Yep.
That's fine.
It was just a discussion item. We weren't voting on it. Okay, so there's a motion and a second to remove this item from the agenda. Any questions for the questions or discussions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any
It's a discussion item, like I have questions.
Okay, well.
So I'm nay.
Right, okay. That was six to one. Sharon, did you get that? Councilwoman Harris voted against it. Yeah. All right, now we have the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Catherine.
I would like to congratulate Beth Sexton when we vote her into the Sustainability Committee. I don't think she is here.
She's at my neighborhood book club. I'm not there.
She is a friend and neighbor. She's retired from IHG. She became a master gardener. And now she's going to use her time to make this Sustainability Committee stronger and I'm proud of her.
Thank you. John.
I had a number of questions regarding the Flock and the GSU. To me, there was one memo that covered, did it cover both? There was, the the documentation provided was a little bit not convincing to me.
Okay, why don't we just pull it off consent?
Both off.
Okay, hold on one second. Sharon's saying it was corrected and republished.
It was corrected and republished this morning.
This morning. So that I was not aware of that. I was only pulled what was given to me and the other the public earlier. So if that's the case, it's it was republished late this morning. I would ask that it be pulled off the consent agenda and and or deferred to a different meeting unless it's needed immediately, which I don't know.
Let's, wait, 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 wait.
Okay, I'm just trying to think.
Right, no, no, no. So at the moment, let's pull seven and eight. Is it both? Seven and eight?
It is.
Off the consent agenda and put them as business items and then we can figure it out.
Sounds good.
Because you can't vote. So I need a motion to amend the consent agenda, please.
On, any individual can ask for removal. I will ask
So we don't, we don't have to Okay.
I will ask for removal of both seven and eight of the consent agenda, please.
Okay, all right. Now with the changed consent agenda, are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, so the consent agenda passes unanimously. Now Eric. Hold on one second. These, can someone ask Eric while?
I can give an update if you like.
Yeah.
On those, yeah, both of those, they can both be deferred to a future meeting. There's no reason to rush through those. It's just something we're trying to, we've been working on different agreements with Flock and for these these locations. But I I would recommend if y'all aren't ready for it, let's go ahead and move it to the next meeting out.
Didn't we discuss the first one, the flock, the flock contract has been discussed, right? It's the GSU one that kind of appeared that didn't have any background at all until
That's right.
Today. So
Okay, so the flock, we're just changing the dates, right? They pretty much are just
Yes, we're just changing the dates. And we we that one was a discussion I'm last time. I'm fine with that one. The GSU one, I would like time to absorb and understand.
Okay, so with that, I'll take a motion on number seven, the new flock con, if there's someone who wants to move.
To approve.
Move by Stacy. Are there any further questions or comments on this contract? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously. Now I have a question about the GSU MOU. Can we move it to a discussion item? So if people have questions tonight or you want to just start over? I mean, do you want to just delay the whole conversation?
I'm just not sure what I missed from the what that was updated in the packet. That's all. I don't know what was there. I mean, I could go read in the next
Let's just, I'd like to defer to the next meeting so that we have time to read it.
So it should come back if possible as a discussion item? Thank you. All right, anybody else have anything on this? All right, we have to amend the, but we have to remove it. So if someone wants to make a motion to amend.
I'd like to make a motion to table or to remove from the agenda. Table. Table item number eight, GSU MOU to the next meeting for discussion item.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by John, second by Stacy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? There, I hear none. It passes unanimously. We are back to public comments. I don't have any new cards. If anyone would like to discuss, you can grab add three minutes, add a card. Seeing no, no movement, I will move on to city manager comments.
Yes, Mayor, I want to thank you all again for the Dunwoody 101, allowing the staff to have those classes for the public. They've been very successful. The other thing I want to say as well, we are working on some zoning videos and things like that to help the public understand the zoning process. And if we need to do more things, we can certainly do that. We'd like to rely on the public feedback from these 101 classes to see what are hot topics for them and also what y'all hear from your constituents of what we need to do. But we're glad to educate the public at any time. And it's nice to hear the comments from from the public to see. As I mentioned one time before on the Dunwoody 101, so many people don't don't see the changes in the city in terms of what all's going on with High Street, Campus 244 and those things in the perimeter area. So it's always fun to hear that information. But those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
There's a boy scout back there if you want to. You don't have to, but my husband would say you have to and he's a scout leader. If you'll stand up and just introduce yourself and tell us what troop you're from. And you're working on which badge? Thank you. Scouts do a lot of good work for our community. We appreciate it. Thank you for catching that, Councilwoman Harris. Council comments.
I guess I would like to thank the staff for all the hard work in the 2026 budget. It is a heavy lift and it is a lot of hours. And I know that it's probably a relief to get it all passed tonight, but I just, your your work is noticed and and thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
Early voting continues. If you're haven't voted yet, if you want to vote earlier, you never know what happens on election day. Even if you've applied for absentee ballot and you haven't mailed that in or dropped it in, you can still go to the library through this Friday, the 31st. Thereafter, go to your regular polling station. You've got two things to vote on. It's the Public Service Commission. That's a statewide office. Haven't had, haven't had an election on that post for several years. And then the local city council districts, one, two, and three, that's your district only. And usually it's a very low turnout. And so your vote does matter. A few years ago, in District Three, it it the margin was only 33 votes. So please let your friends and neighbors know and please catch your vote.
Ditto to what Councilwoman Secunder had said. Thursday night is one of my favorite events of the year, which is our trunk retreat with our police department and our Parks Department at Brook Run. It starts around five. Always have a big crowd, so much fun. Come see what council dresses up as this year. You never know. And Halloween is Friday. It is by far the worst traffic day in Atlanta normally. Plan accordingly and be careful. And with that, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move by Joe. Second by Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.